Issues we ought to talk about.
I mean K and L.
Good evening, I'll call the meeting to order. In Slane County, planning and zoning.
Hopefully twenty second, twenty twenty four.
First item will be of the agenda. Good evening, I'll call the meeting to order. In Slane County, planning and zoning.
Hopefully twenty second, twenty twenty four.
Well, you're doing so good there.
Did that one wrong, gotta start over again?
Are we ready to try this?
Are you good? Okay. I have called the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the approval. Of the agenda for tonight's meeting. We got two CUPs to consider and once again, the battery storage resolution. I'll entertain a motion.
Chair, I move to approve the agenda for this evening.
I'll second.
Properly moved and seconded, we approve the minutes of the September twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. As printed.
As printed.
Seconded. And properly moved and seconded, that we approve the minutes of the September twenty four, twenty twenty four. As printed, all those in favor say aye. Both same sign, motion carries unanimously. The next item will be approval of the minutes of September twenty fourth. Is there any discussion, any changes on anything? It was kind of a lengthy ordeal, a lot of discussion. Anybody want to make any changes to it? Otherwise, give me a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that we approve the minutes from September twenty fourth, twenty twenty four.
As printed.
As printed.
Seconded. And properly moved and seconded, that we approve the minutes of the September twenty four, twenty twenty four. As printed, all those in favor say aye. Both same sign, motion carries unanimously. First item on the agenda is CUP twenty four dash oh three, conditional use permit. I will turn it over to staff.
Okay, Commissioners, this is, the applicant is proposing a two hundred and fifty foot self-supporting communications tower. The applicant is Nextech Wireless, owner of the property is Craig Baderman. The tower will be located on leased space of point one acres. Based on the current location as determined on the site plan, there's a little discrepancy because on the site plan, it looks like the tower will be approximately a hundred and fifty feet from the south property line. And, but, in other parts of the document, it says it will meet the two hundred and fifty foot setback. Tower must be a minimum of two hundred and fifty feet from that south property line. Tower is not located within the airport buffer zone. Applicant has submitted the site plan. There is one existing tower located within a mile north, I think, of the proposed location. However, co-location and business decisions cannot be considered as a basis of your decision. Final FAA and FCC approving documentation must be submitted. Property is in the floodplain and may require additional approval from Division of Water Resources. Comments from other departments and agencies, no other comments from other agencies. We have, however, received public comment. Staff has received concerns from the public regarding the aesthetic appearance of the surrounding area. This tower may have, under the CUP review criteria, currently the zoning regulations state the commission may consider the effect of the facility on the character of the neighborhood and other public health, safety and welfare problems. However, due to the subjective nature of aesthetic character, more specific guidance in our regulations would be needed. Such guidance would require findings of verifiable evidence to override the precedent already in place in this area. Furthermore, the commission may not consider anything that would prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the provision of personal wireless services as stated in seven oh four A of the Federal Telecommunications Act. Item two is some consideration, as the same consideration is to item one, as far as location. The commission can only consider those items that it is expressly directed to consider under the zoning regulations, namely setback, fall zone compliance and compliance with floodplain regulations. Opposed development, under item number three, successful operation of the surrounding area and its basic community functions or will provide an essential service to the community or region. Quality of the service may be considered a technical aspect and not really allowed for consideration of this proposal per our zoning regulations. Staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit with the conditions that the building permit will not be issued until a commercial permit review has been completed. Floodplain development permit application must be completed verifying all electrical equipment is elevated two feet above the base flood elevation is determined by a licensed Kansas engineer. Any DWR fill permits for this project must be submitted. A statement from a licensed Kansas engineer verifying the structural design meets the requirements of the building codes and fall zone requirements. All FAA and FCC approvals must be submitted to staff prior to building permit approval. Alternatives would be to approve the request with the conditions as listed above or conditionally approve the request with other conditions the commission may deem necessary. I think the applicant is here or the applicant's representative and they may speak if they wish. I think they're here.
We don't have the applicant over.
Is the applicant here?
We're the representative.
Yeah, you'd have to table it.
Okay.
Just table it once.
I do have one question though. The two hundred and fifty foot restriction.
Yeah.
Does that apply to all buildings as well on the property?
Yeah, it's, it has to be that far away from any structure as well.
You didn't mention, you mentioned.
Yeah, it's property lines.
But there are buildings on the property.
Right, right, and they have.
They do have to be at least two fifty from those buildings.
I believe, I believe they do, I'll double check, but usually if there's a structure there, usually sometimes they'll put, the applicants will put a, or the developers will put a, like a shed there next to it that has equipment in it and so that's within proximity. So technically, you know, I mean, as far as residences, it can't be within, you know, it has to be two hundred and fifty or further.
Yeah, because there are other buildings on the property.
Yeah.
Okay. So, with no applicant here, then we will table it. Indefinitely, we don't definitely have to give them a definite time.
Mr. Chairman, I move to table this CUP until further meetings.
I'll second it.
And properly moved and seconded, that we table CUP twenty four dash oh three indefinitely. All those in favor say aye. Both same sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, staff. We will move on. CUP twenty four oh four, staff, I'll turn it back to you.
Hey, this is a request for approval of an accessory, accessory or temporary residence to be inhabited for the care of a family member. This is a fourteen point one acre parcel generally located at one.
Issues we ought to talk about.
Blood planes.
Okay.
I mean, K and L.
Good evening. I'll call the meeting to order.
Okay.
In Sleen County, planning and zoning.
Something.
Hopefully twenty second, twenty twenty four.
We ought to talk about.
But.
It's with Jay.
First item will be approval of the agenda. Evening. I'll call the meeting to order.
Okay.
In Sleen County, planning and zoning.
Something.
Hopefully twenty second, twenty twenty four.
Get to hear ourselves talk.
Well, you're doing so good there. There.
Did that one wrong. Got to start over again?
Are we ready to try this?
Are you good?
Okay.
I have called the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting. We got two CUPs to consider and once again, the battery storage resolution. I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, I move to approve the agenda for this evening.
I'll second.
Properly moved and second, we approve the agenda as printed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries unanimously. The next item will be approval of the minutes of September twenty fourth. Is there any discussion, any changes on anything? It was kind of a lengthy ordeal, a lot of discussion. Anybody want to make any changes to it? Otherwise, give me a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we have approved the minutes from twenty, September twenty fourth, twenty twenty four.
As printed.
As printed.
Seconded.
Been properly moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of the September twenty four, twenty twenty four as printed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries unanimously. First item on the agenda is CUP twenty four dash oh three conditional use permit. I will turn it over to staff.
Okay, commissioners, this is, uh, the applicant is proposing a two hundred and fifty foot self-supporting communications tower. Uh, the applicant is Nextech Wireless. Uh, owner of the property is Craig Baderman. Uh, the tower will be located on leased space of point one acres. Based on the current location as, uh, determined on the site plan, uh, there's a little discrepancy because on the site plan, it looks like the tower will be approximately a hundred and fifty feet from the south property line. Um, and, uh, but, uh, uh, in other parts of the document, it says it will meet the two hundred and fifty foot, uh, setback. Uh, tower must be a minimum of two hundred and fifty feet from that south property line. Tower is not located within the airport buffer zone. Applicant has submitted the site plan. There is one existing tower located within a mile north, I think, of the proposed location. However, co-location and business decisions cannot be considered as a basis of your decision. Final FAA and FCC approving documentation must be submitted. Property is in the floodplain and, uh, may require additional approval from Division of Water Resources. Uh, comments from other departments and agencies, no other comments from other agencies. Uh, we have, however, uh, received public comment. Uh, staff has received concerns from the public regarding the aesthetic appearance of this surrounding area. This tower may have, uh, under the CUP review criteria. Currently, the zoning regulations state the commission may consider the effect of the facility on the character of the neighborhood and other public health, safety and welfare problems. However, due to the, uh, subjective nature of aesthetic character, more specific guidance in our regulations would be needed. Uh, such guidance would require findings of verifiable evidence to override the precedent already in place in this area. Furthermore, the commission may not consider anything that would prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the provision of personal wireless services as stated in seven oh four A of the Federal Telecommunications Act. Uh, item two is some consideration as the same consideration as to item one, as far as location. The commission can only consider those items that it is expressly directed to consider under the zoning regulations, namely setback, fall zone compliance and compliance with floodplain regulations. Uh, proposed development, uh, under item number three, uh, successful operation of the surrounding area and its basic community functions, or will provide an essential service to the community or region. Quality of the service, uh, may be considered a technical aspect and not really allowed for consideration of this proposal per our zoning regulations. Staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit uh, with the conditions that the building permit will not be issued until a commercial permit review has been completed. Uh, floodplain development permit application must be completed verifying all electrical equipment is elevated two feet above the base flood elevation is determined by a licensed Kansas engineer. Any DWR fill permits for this project must be submitted. A statement from a licensed Kansas engineer verifying the structural design meets the requirements of the building codes and fall zone requirements. All FAA and FCC approvals must be submitted to staff prior to building permit approval. Alternatives would be to approve the request with the conditions as listed above, or conditionally approve the request with other conditions the commission may deem necessary. I think the applicant is here or the applicant's representative. And they may speak if they wish. I think they're here.
We don't have the applicant.
Is the applicant here?
Table it if it's. Or the representative.
Yeah, you'd have to table it.
Okay.
Just table it once.
Uh, I do have one question though. The two hundred and fifty foot restriction.
Yeah.
Does that apply to all buildings as well on the property?
Yeah, it's, it's, it has to be that far away from any structure as well.
You didn't mention, I mentioned.
Yeah, it's property lines.
But there are buildings on the property.
Right, right. And they have.
They do have to be at least two fifty from those.
I believe, I believe they do. I'll double check, but usually if there's a structure there, usually sometimes they'll put the, the, the applicants will put a, or the developers will put a, uh, like a shed there next to it that has equipment in it, and so that's within proximity. So technically, you know, I mean, as far as residences, it can't be within, you know, it has to be two hundred and fifty or further.
Cause there are other buildings on the property.
Yeah.
Okay. So when no applicant's here, then we will table it.
Tabled.
Um, indefinitely, we don't definitely have to give them a definite time.
Mr. Chairman, I move to table this CUP until further meetings.
I'll second it.
And properly moved and seconded that we table CUP twenty four dash oh three indefinitely. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, staff. We will move on. CUP twenty four oh four, staff, I'll turn it back to you.
Hey, this is a, uh, request, uh, for approval of an accessory, accessory or temporary residence to be inhabited for the care of a family member. This is a fourteen point one acre parcel generally located at one two one eight four South Gypson Valley Road. Um, the, uh, findings are in accordance with the Sleen County zoning and master plan article eight. The applicant is asking for approval of a twelve by sixty foot construction trailer model year nineteen ninety nine to be used as a temporary residence for caretaker of a family member. The application meets the goals of the two thousand eight comprehensive plan for appropriate rural development and density. The accessory residence will be located away from the designated one percent annual chance flood zone. The separation distance between the primary residents and secondary residents will be fifty feet. This use must meet all requirements of the Sleen County Environmental Code, including separate waste system rated at fifty gallons per day, and this is per our sanitarian Seth Odette. Uh, and, uh, similar temporary residences have been allowed by the planning board in the past. Uh, the conditions for approval would be in the event the residency status of the proposed manufactured home changes or property is sold, temporary residence must be removed prior to property being placed on the market. No lot split is allowed due to lack of building rights for this parcel. And the use must meet all requirements of the Sleen County Sanitarian. Um, recommendation, staff is recommending approval of CUP twenty four oh four in accordance with staff findings, one through six and conditions, one through three. The planning commission may consider the following actions, approve the application according to staff findings and conditions. Approve the application with amended findings or conditions. Table or continue the application for further consideration or deny the application based on findings by the planning commission. With that, I, I hope the applicant is here for this case. Is the applicant here?
Boy, we're shooting a knife.
We're shooting, yeah.
Well, once again, I will entertain a motion that we table this indefinitely.
Mr. Chairman, I move to table CUP twenty four dash oh four till such time as the applicant can make it be a hearing attendance.
Second. And properly moved and seconded that we table CUP twenty four oh four indefinitely. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries unanimously. We will move on. Resolution, text amendment twenty four oh one. Staff.
This is a continuation of, uh, review of the resolution. Uh, that would, uh, establish provisions for battery energy storage systems in Sleen County. Um, uh, I've been working, uh, with, uh, getting the, uh, this particular resolution put together. There's been a couple of additions, uh, we've received a couple of emails and one of the emails, uh, I think that, uh, I've, I've included, uh, I think we've included some of what, uh, Teresa Swisher was wanting included as well, I think, uh, uh, and as well as, uh, we've got some other items to consider that were submitted by Rowan Milton, our Mitten of the, uh, uh, plus power, just to give some idea of cleaning up the documents so that we remove language that's related to like the solar uh, farms, because there's still some language pertaining to the actual, what they're proposing for sites uh, to, that still kind of references the, uh, provisions for the solar. So, and I've included with, with your packets, I kind of included an email there next to you that uh, from, uh, Mr. Mitten, that if you want to go over each of these to see which is applicable and which ones you want to see. If you wanted to direct me to just go ahead and include those in uh, those corrections, and if you want to just go ahead and discuss those now, or.
Um, is the applicant here?
Well, there's, there's no applicant.
Yeah, this is.
There's no applicant.
Rephrase that.
Prior applicant.
The builder, the constructor, do they want to make any comments?
Uh, is, is anybody from plus power?
Plus, do you want to make any comments? If you do come to the podium. I'll open it up for public comment and I'm gonna bring it back to my staff.
No, we don't comment.
Okay, okay, okay. Um, I guess before we go through this, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for public comment, five minutes maximum, then I'm gonna bring it back to my commission. Anyone like to speak on any of this, then we will bring this up for discussion. Does anyone want to add anything before I close it to the public?
And, you know, if I want to drive all the way in here, I might as well get up and ask a question. My name is Gary Olson. Seventy-three hundred South Whitmore Road, Gypson, Kansas. And I apologize for missing some meetings because of farming season, but I guess I'm just curious. Um, I fully understand from talking to staff over here that really, we've already, I think you all have already approved a, um, wind power resolutions, and we have that in place, and we've also already approved, um, solar, um, panels, and we have that in place. So I guess my understanding is we're working just on the battery energy stories, is what you told me earlier.
Yes.
And so with that question in mind, um, you know, I know that the last time I attended, you were grabbing information from other planning and zoning places, and, um, I guess I'd be curious, just to bring me up to speed because I feel like I'm a little bit lost. Have you been, um, trying to adopt the one from like Douglas County or something and mingle it around a little bit, or where have you found information for quote, battery energy storage rules and regulations? Cause I guess I really don't know. I mean, have you found them like?
We're getting information from the public during the public comment period, and we're investigating those and incorporating them where we can.
Okay, so with that in mind, um, have you been receiving any input from anybody that might have a vested interest in this and giving you advice as to what to put in these rules and regulations, or is it just purely what you have been able to obtain? Or are you getting things from like Power Plus or, or any of these other people that might have a vested interest in wanting to see one of these approved someday?
Gary, we've taken, taken lots of comments from the public here.
Okay, all right.
I'm not gonna name, I can name names, but they're, and they're here tonight, but, and we appreciate their input. So that's, that's been inputted into this resolution. From, from people who live in that, in that area.
Okay, well, I obviously farm in that area, and I'm obviously one thousand percent against this because I feel that, um, they've already acquired land within a mile of where they want to put the battery energy storage. And I feel like we're, we're still doing a little bit of a rodeo, Don, in the fact that, um, I feel like that there's a lot of stuff going on behind the scenes that we are not privileged to, that is going to end up in a battery storage entity plant at located on that piece of property that they already got, and we're going to be going down McReynolds Road in, within the next two years with solar panels.
Gary, I'm gonna interrupt you. This is not site specific. This is, this is a
General.
resolution we're working on for the county. They could build one east, south, north, whatever. This is not site specific. It has nothing to do with one location.
Okay, that's, I, I'm glad to hear that. And then I, I hope that you guys are doing research and, um, on your own independently so that, um, we're not just taking the recommendations of staff and implementing it into this, um, plan that we want to approve for the whole Sleen County.
This commission has been researching on their own.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. If anybody else wants to talk, you got your five minutes.
I'll make it real quick. Todd Gabor, seven seven zero two South Niles Road. Um, I'm late to need. I haven't read anything in the past that, uh, you guys have talked about, so I'm just here to speak to my knowledge, which is limited on battery power. Uh, I spent twenty years in the Air Force, uh, eight years of those, uh, flying an aircraft with twenty nuclear uh, weapons strapped to them. Um, now, fast forward twenty years, I, uh, I fly an aircraft that flies freight, and we deal with, uh, all kinds of, uh, batteries, cell phones. Uh, thermal runaway is one of the things that we have to be concerned about. So, uh, I'm just wondering about the cost benefit, or I should say risk benefit of this facility in our county. Um, I think we can all agree a nuclear weapon and a, and a battery are very different, uh, come from different standpoints. Um, but I would feel more comfortable with a nuclear weapon, I'm sorry, a nuclear facility like Wolf Creek versus a battery plant. Um, what, like I said, what little I know about batteries. Uh, the risks they pose versus the output, uh, is intriguing. Um, I, I think, you know, like Wolf Creek has had a pretty safe track record. Batteries pretty, pretty new. Just, uh, one question to pose, and if there's any, uh, education or, um, flyers out there that exist on what the benefit of putting a battery facility in, excuse me, in our county would be, I'd appreciate, uh, learning about that. Thank you.
Good comments. And once again, this is not site specific. There's not saying we're ever gonna have one. We're trying to get some basic guidelines. So if one does come before us, we're not sitting here wondering what to do. So, so I, I keep reiterating, this is not site specific.
And there's, and even if there were an application that came before us after this gets approved, it's no guarantee that it would
Right.
be printed.
There's, this is no guarantee any site will be approved. We're just trying to get some basic guidelines to follow.
Another comment out there, Don.
Another comment? Sure, I'm not closing the public.
Mm-hmm.
Mike Jensen, fifty-six ninety-four East K four Highway, and I own property out in, out there in South Sleen County, and I've received from Jupiter Power a request to purchase part of my property for, for battery storage. Uh, they want to purchase or lease, and this is a ways away from Summit transmitter, power station, so they don't have to be right next to it. So the Pandora's box is being opened or is opened. So please consider that, uh. I can show you guys where they're wanting to do it. It's right here in black and white. So Moore's on the way.
Thank you, Mike. Any other public comment? Otherwise I will close it. Darn it, I thought I had it closed.
The best.
Oh, I take it for that.
Yeah.
We do appreciate your work.
Teresa, first, I wanted to tell you, I apologize for not, I know you emailed me that and, and I received it. It's just I wasn't sure which items to, you know, discuss.
Not to, yeah, we, we've worked through it, but thank you for acknowledging that you did get it, get, get both of them actually. So I, I just heard yesterday that there is another battery energy storage company wanting to come in. We do not reference anything about how many, how close they can be. In the solar, we did. We said that they couldn't be within, I mean, two solar farms could not be within X distance of each other. I think we definitely need to add that to this. Um, especially, you know, his property is like, what, half a mile? Half a mile from the summit that they're wanting to purchase. So we, we definitely need to, to add something about that to our, to our, uh, resolution here.
What's your suggestion?
Haven't really given that enough thought. I, I should have, well, I should have, um, looked at the solar. And maybe we emulate what the solar is.
That was one mile.
Is it, that's what I was thinking. It was one mile.
That's why I was asking if you had an idea.
That would, that would work. Um, we did talk to somebody about the solar and, uh, because of the one mile, they're not able to, to come into Sleen County, uh, which is kind of what we figured would happen.
Yeah.
Um, this, this document, we, we've made great progress on it. I, I appreciate everybody's time efforts. Um, still want to stress, double stress, the community awareness, um, how how are we gonna know? The, the alarm system needs to be, um, completely accurate and, and on, on point, so that if, if there is an extraordinary event, the community knows, we also need to know what we need to do if that happens. And, and it, it touches in here that, that we will, but I want to be sure that we stress that. And, and, and it also lists southeast of Sleen, that it, it is annually, they will be part of the emergency preparedness and the fire departments and, and the school systems. And in this case, I, southeast, because that's where I'm at. Um, so and may, maybe we could add the, the community to that also. Um, the other thing that I.
Before, before you go on.
Yes, ma'am.
Were you? Were you thinking about like a tor- tornado siren?
Well, no, a battery energy storage actually has an alarm system
Mm-hmm.
that needs to be on like the fence posts, so that if there's an event, who's ever controlling those batteries, you know, they, they say they're watching them twenty-four seven, you know, monitoring them, that they set these alarms off, and, and if we would hear the alarms as a community, that we would know that there is a problem and we need to listen to the radio, uh, you know, whatever the plan is at that point. But we need to know so that we're not, we're not waiting three days, which is what this says, to, to get notice that we should have, uh, been in, in, you know, housing in place three days ago, and we've just now been contaminated. So that, that's just some, some things I really can't stress enough as, as a patron in the area. And then the other thing would be distance from homes, and I know CU, um, NFPA eight fifty-five has, has a distance. And I'm, I'm assuming you're going to control the rest of it with a CUP based on where it's physically at with houses and
Right.
other structures near it.
Mm-hmm.
So that's all I have.
The CUP is going to
Control a lot.
Control a lot of this.
Yeah.
And that's, that's what I just want to.
Kind of oversee, but then it's gonna come down to the site to how we handle it.
So let, let me ask a question from from really not understanding the CUP process. So they come, somebody comes and, and wants to do some change to the planning and zoning or ordinances as they are. Do they sit down with you and fill out a CUP? How, how do you know what to put as, as, as items in that CUP? And how do you go about changing it?
What I do, it, it depends on what they're asking.
Sure.
Uh, and so usually what I do is I go, we have a very specific set, and this group has a very specific set of review, review criteria. To say, and for them to say, okay, these findings support what they're wanting to do, or they failed to support what they're wanting to do. And so if they fail to support what they're wanting to do, then it gets denied.
Okay, so you guys have kind of a general.
Yeah.
And of course, the county commissioners have the final say.
Right, right. So, so if during the process you guys determine you should have added this, this and this, you could do that halfway through the process? Or once the CUP is written, you can't change.
No, we're not gonna change the.
Yeah.
We're not gonna change this.
No.
No, no, I meant the CUP.
The CUP has conditions that are gonna be placed on it based on both the regulations and whatever this group would feel needs to be included.
So can, can the CUP be modified along the way is what I'm asking.
Uh, they, they would, the only way that it could be modified, uh, would be, is if the applicant uh, enlarged the space that they're wanting to do, and if there's a change in the
That's what.
The conditions that were placed, yeah.
Okay, I just, I really didn't, wasn't sure about that process.
If they changed some sort of parameter of what was approved before, then they would have to get this board, come back before this board and get it amended, you know.
Okay. All right, that's all I had.
Come back to the podium, please, Mike.
I didn't use my five minutes.
I don't know.
I'll keep it quiet.
Unplug the microphone.
I know McPherson County has moratorium on this, these batteries and solar and wind. Why can't we put a moratorium on and save all this problem? Just put a plane, put a moratorium on it, call it done and over with.
Because moratorium.
Cause it's not over with in two years.
Right, in two years, yeah.
Moratorium means we're still here.
It'll.
Well, we could come back.
We're trying to put something, a guideline. And keep in mind, there's been a lot of research going into this, and there's been a lot of public input going into this document. This isn't something we just pulled off the shelf and said, we're gonna use this.
I understand that, and I know, cause I've been here to a lot of the meetings.
It's tough.
And I know you guys have not just taken everything lightly. I just think if we. I just think if we could just put a moratorium on it and say, we're done, we're through people, sorry.
But the problem is, a moratorium doesn't mean we're done, we're coming back.
We do something permanent, cause like I say, they're coming.
Yeah.
And they don't care where, all they have to do is hook into a transmission line, cause the one runs right across the corner of this property.
But keep one thing in mind, no matter what we do, that battery storage facility has to make, has to meet the regulations that FERC puts on it. And they have a stricter requirements than anything that we can put on.
I'm not worried about that.
You should be. You should be worried, because they're not gonna allow something to go on the grid unless it meets their requirements.
And we've all seen you pulled up their fires. They're caught on fire in place, have been told, people have been told, you know, shelter in place and stuff, so. We all know that they've got their rules, regulations, they've got their guidelines, trying to be safe. But it still happens.
Yeah, well, so do car accidents.
So do car accidents.
It's tough.
It's different.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Ms, Ms. Chairman. I, I see you looking around, so I think you can hear me. This is Josh Swatty, I'm virtual.
Oh, yeah, Josh.
Uh, if, if I might uh say something quickly, I just, again, I appreciate the work of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, and, and reminding everyone too, that these are just regulations. Uh, and then also, it, it was also news to me that Jupiter Power is potentially looking at a battery site. Of course, these are, you know, leasing is always a private contract done between a private landowner and another entity, which is fine. Uh, but I would say that uh these are somewhat self-limiting in the fact that uh it's not like, you know, if you wanted to open a clothing store on a corner and then a competitor opened a clothing store and then there's really no limit to how many clothing stores can open in that area. Uh, there is a limited amount of space available in a substation. And that's why when we talk about the queue, you know, getting into the Southwest Power Pool, it has to be heavily studied by the Southwest Power Pool. And so though there is no limit legally to how many companies can come in and try to lease uh for battery storage or anything else. Uh, there is a limit, the Southwest Power Pool is not just gonna let a hundred battery companies put up a hundred battery units on that substation. There is a limited amount of available capacity there. Uh, and so it is somewhat self-governing in that sense uh for those. And then there was another comment earlier, uh, just about the, the sort of carryover between battery and, and solar. And there is uh no connection between these two. There is not going to be any solar uh that is at all associated with any of the battery storage facilities that are being referenced in this regulation. Uh, and in fact, uh Plus Power, um, who has uh uh put forward public comments, which are available to anyone to see, uh, has made sure to understand too, that as the county goes through these regulations, we make sure that we remove any of the reference points to solar uh in the regulations too, just to make sure that they are clearly for battery storage only. Thank you.
Thanks, Josh, and I think we did pretty well tear this apart to make sure all the solar terminology was out here. But yeah, thanks, Josh, for the comments, don't run off. Okay. Gary, do you have any other final comments?
Yeah, just quickly, I probably have used four and a half minutes, so you only get thirty seconds more of me. So, um, obviously southeast of Seline, uh, couldn't publicly state whether they were for or against this. But um have you put any regulation in as far as how close these can be to southeast of Seline?
This is not site specific.
What do you mean it's not site specific?
We are talking about a resolution.
Okay.
It could be built in north, south, east or west part of the county. This is not site specific. It has nothing to do with.
Okay, so I misunderstood you, Dwayne, when you said earlier about site specific, I was more like thinking, you know, like.
We have no application.
Okay, but, but would it not make some sense to say, hey, we really don't want one of these within um X feet of Phillips lighting now Kubota, we really don't want one of these within X feet of southeast of Seline?
That would be something specific for whatever application they would be considering at the time.
Thank you.
It's the CUP. But I don't understand why you can't go ahead and at least put the parameters out there right now. I mean, why can't you do that? I don't get.
There are some parameters in here based on standards right now.
Right, I, I understand that, but um I, I would feel better as a taxpayer that pays literally thousands and thousands of dollars to your county knowing that we can't have a battery energy storage ten feet from southeast of Seline or ten feet from the city limits or ten feet from houses. I mean, it only makes common sense that, I know you're saying it's not site specific, but I don't know why we just don't put those in as right now.
Have you read the resolution?
I don't have the resolution, no, huh?
We have specifics in there.
About the distance?
Based on setback, yes.
Please read this.
Okay, well, I don't even know how to get a hold of it, Bill Paul, how do I get a hold of it?
It's on the webpage for the planning and zoning.
After the meeting, here's a copy.
I'll be, I'll be glad to hand you that.
Well, I mean, that's a good comment, don't get me wrong, it's a good comment, and we've discussed that.
By the way, too, this is a resolution, if it passes us here as this board and it goes to the county commission and they pass it, it's a law. Anything the county commission does, it's a law, anything the city commission does, that's called a, an ordinance.
How long before it's passed or not passed?
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
I'm sorry, how long before it's passed or not passed?
It's depends.
He's asking how long before it's passed or not passed.
It depends on, on when this.
The county commissioners want to take it up.
Yeah, when they're gonna take it up.
We send it up there, it's up to their, them to put it on their agenda, just to let you know that, yeah.
But we're still in public comment here.
Yeah, right, we haven't sent them nothing. And they can send it back to us for review, so. Four and a half minutes, I was watching.
Four and a half minutes, you took my thirty seconds.
We appreciate the comments, don't get me wrong.
Yes. Brooke Swisher, sixty-three ninety-eight South Woodward Road. The NFPA fact sheet, you guys included the NFPA sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, and I believe seventy-two. But why did you not include NFPA one thirteen, one-ten, one-eleven, sixteen-twenty?
Now, based on that comment, let's just go ahead and put NFPA all, every one of them.
All NFPA regulations?
Yeah, because in essence, they have to meet these requirements on all parts of building systems already.
Right, but to cover our butts.
If we cover our butts and we put in specific information here that is duplicated and it changes on the, in, in the national, then we're stuck with what we put in, not with what national puts in. We tried, and Teresa and I had many comments on this, about trying to make sure that we utilize national guidelines as, as the guidance that they are supposed to be using. And so that we didn't duplicate anything and that we didn't specify anything that could have changed in and improved in the national uh legislation, in the national guidelines.
Okay, you're going off the clean energy guidelines, not the Department of Energy guidelines?
We went off several different guidelines. DOE, we went off of uh the independents, we went off a lot of several DOE, I can't name them all, I'd have to go back through my notes, but we've got several different documents that we used to be able to put these into place.
Okay.
And I really didn't want to list every single item in here, when most of these items are part that they have to meet anyway.
Anyway.
As far as their buildings, systems.
The standard for installation of sprinkler systems is included in that?
Yep, that's under, that's under the UL.
Ninety-five forty.
Yeah. Anyway, I didn't bring my notes tonight.
Okay. I just want to make sure everything's covered.
Yeah, well, we had a conversation this weekend and that's one of the things that I did was I went back and read a lot of the NFPRs and, and the ULs, just to make sure that we weren't, we could keep adding every one of these if we wanted to, but some of these are already covered in what we've already listed. So.
Okay.
Any other public comment, otherwise I'm gonna close it. Saying no, I'm closing it. So I think we need to discuss these items here that were brought before us. We want to go through those just briefly.
Yeah.
Do you want, you cover these here first?
Yes, let's just touch on these or they wanted us to look at tonight and how they fit into.
Put it up on the screen.
Uh, okay, we don't have it, we don't have it, but I got this here, you have.
What it is, it's an email from Plus Power. They wanted us to discuss some items. Okay. Okay, staff, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, the uh under uh section twelve point one seven oh five.
Okay, let's pull that up on page. You are right. So, the third, twelve seventeen oh five is on the third page back.
Yep.
Standards.
Yeah, and under A two, Roman numer, Roman numeral two.
A two, okay.
Says, uh, please delete the following sentence, where approved, grading shall not exceed five percent of the site area unless a modification is granted by the planning commission.
Okay.
And the reason for that is under the solar, we allowed five percent because solar does not have a, a major impact as far as grading. But you're here, you're gonna be looking at a foundation system here that's gonna be cut and filled. And I think the most important thing is making sure that we preserve the topsoil, but I'll still allow class three land to be cut and filled.
Now, are we okay though, a modification from this grading requirement may be granted if it is found to be necessary?
Does that cover it?
We left our door open.
Well, we did, I mean.
Grading part, we could leave. A modification from this may be granted. I think we've left the door.
What's everybody else think?
Right, what do you think?
It's, it states it pretty specifically in there.
Instead of all this wording that they're putting in here.
It allows us to take care of it in the CUP.
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't think we need all this.
Requires it.
And we don't really need all this wording in here. At the, we've taken care of it by just saying, may be granted.
Okay, right, no.
Okay.
Then we, okay, and now M two. Now, maintenance?
Noise.
No, I will tell you, under this, on this copy that we've got, we're missing J and L. And, I mean, K and L. And that is worth the noise. I didn't, okay. Thanks. Somebody's cheating me.
Yeah. You can only get single sided.
Double sided, alright.
Take it away, Wayne.
Hey, and, oh, you didn't flip it on the other side or you?
Get a blank page.
It's the same, you've got a blank page.
Yeah, he's, he's.
You got a blank page, okay.
Yes.
Alright.
I don't have noise.
Okay, work with us here, people. Okay, now we're onto this M, please revise the following sentence.
Number two, it says, please revise the sentence, it says, as the average noise generated from the battery energy storage systems components and associated ancillary uh equipment measured at the nearest building, lot line that can be built upon or public way shall not exceed any auditory limits established.
It ain't my shit, I'm K M two.
It's K two.
It's K two.
K two.
Okay.
Cause now, yeah, that is not.
Yeah.
Not M two, that's K two.
K is noise.
Oh, yeah. Keep in mind, I resequenced this properly.
Okay. After this, I'm not finding that on my, okay, so back to section K.
Noise to auditory requirements.
Okay, want me to reread it? As, as the average noise generated from the battery energy storage systems, components and associated ancillary equipment measured at the nearest building, lot line that can be built upon or public way shall not exceed any auditory limits established for each land use zone.
Okay, and they want to change that, then there's residence.
Residence.
Building only. Stan, or comments?
It's, my only thought is if we're just looking at a building, what if someone builds?
I don't agree with that at all, do you?
I only imagine that a resident.
If there's a lot line, that means that there's a potential building site.
Or building, yeah. If it's, cause this is only looking at current.
Current building, I don't like changing that. That's the first part of the sentence, okay? Continuing on.
Okay, next one is twelve seventeen oh five, I've got you.
Are we okay with K two then?
We are fine with K two.
The whole thing there, we're not discussing anymore on that? Okay.
So twelve seventeen oh five, you Board of County Commissioners should have the right to modify any requirement in the zoning regulations upon a determination that. It's actually S, right?
Yeah, that's what I was.
Okay.
I ain't finding that one either, it's in much worse.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Board of County Commissioners should have the right to modify any requirement in the zoning regulations upon a determination that the modification is necessary and consistent with the purpose and intent of these regulations. Limiting the items that are available for modification to the list of four at the bottom of the paragraph unnecessarily limits the power of the board.
Okay, so the items that are available for modification on the site area, the amount of grading possible and location of electrical interconnections and distribution lines. So basically, we've limited ourselves to those four items.
Well, we've limited the county commissioners to those four items.
Correct. Comments? Commissioners? Agree, disagree? Do you want to be limiting the county commissioners to those four items?
Nope.
Oh, no.
No, no. Let's put a strike through in that so I catch it.
I don't like making that change. Any other comments? I heard a couple no's.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
We all kind of agree that we don't agree with that. We're not gonna limit the items.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, timeframe, that is not W, that is.
U.
U.
U, yeah.
We're gonna have this thing figured out yet, okay. Timeframe change.
From the date of planning commission approval to from the start of operations or building permit issuance. Currently, that's how we do all of our CUPs technically.
And I understand why they're asking that question, because they were looking at a five-year
Could be.
Lead time.
Right.
Is what they were, is why they.
Yeah.
That was actually where the all started.
Right.
Could be years to get their approval.
So what do you guys say? Change it or not?
I don't.
I don't.
It's all part of the I mean, we're not taking it away from them.
Right.
If they don't get it within.
Right.
Are we?
Well, and, and we can adjust that too, we have the power to make that change if we, if they have a longer time.
If they request a certain timing, you can, you can approve it and then request another year, yeah.
Comments, do we need to make that change? Are we good with? I think we have the authority to kind of oversee that, don't we?
Yeah.
Okay. We were not gonna change that one. Now let's go to twelve seventeen oh six.
And it says, it would be ideal to have the changes to any items in this list subject only to administrative review and appro, and approval. Otherwise, projects will be permitted based on very preliminary designs and inevitably have to go back to public hearings for changes.
Have you found it? Have you found it?
Timing is what this is all about.
Oh, six. You found it, yeah? I haven't found it yet.
It's under, it says C.
Proposed condition C, right?
Different, yeah.
Proposed condition oh-six.
If you look at all of our proposed conditions.
Those conditions.
Proposed conditions. Right.
These would all go to a preliminary design. And once the final design is made, then they got to go back and do it again.
If there are major changes.
Oh, it's there, there's C.
Okay.
But then we do it administratively, what's a major change that can be done administratively versus what requires a system of P modification or amendment?
Make a comment on it?
Nope.
All right, now. So let's discuss what, what this means here. Are they trying to rewrite the entire thing we've done down here in C?
Staff, are they just, is this referring to if the preliminary design is approved in the CUP and after a detailed design, there's some modification?
Usually, usually what happens in these, and I'm learning this as well from, from other types of alternative energy things, like with the wind stuff that I'm dealing with in Dickinson, is that a lot of times a developer will have preliminary site plans that come before the planning commission and it'll be kind of like generally located here, generally located there, and it's subject to change, you know, upon a final, final design. And so, because they haven't completed their, their design criteria yet.
Interconnect requirements.
Yeah, yeah, they want to.
You know, myriad of things.
But they know enough to give like enough preliminary and, and it's, it's not going to be, so when, my understanding is when, when a developer will submit something uh, after, you know, a final site plan after it's, it's approved, then we, we uh, we check the site plan based, you know, that would be me as staff administratively. We'll check that site plan based on uh, the conditions you all placed on it. And if there's a variation of, you know, they're saying that allowing me to get, to, to give some sort of variation, I would feel better if I had some idea of what, if you will, percentage.
It really needs to come back to us.
It would have to come back if it, so now, now what we do have is I think that there's like a built-in administrative ten percent uh, variance in there that we can do. So if there's, if it varies by about ten percent as far as the distances and stuff, I could approve that, but you know, I would feel better if it went before you guys again.
As difficult as this is.
Yeah.
Let's take the load off of you.
I agree.
And bring it back.
Okay.
You've had enough loads recently?
Yeah, it is. That's too much. And I'm going to go ahead, I'm going to open that back up. We had a public comment.
Yeah.
I didn't want, we wanted to finish our discussion. You've had some great comments and we want you back.
Him covered it. I was going to say basically that, that, you know, often we permit based on preliminary designs and then you guys check at building permit review.
Right.
That, you know, the final design, once it's fully baked, complies with sort of the spirit of the condition.
Yeah.
We, we're right in our discussion. It could be five years to get everything in place.
Yeah.
Before we ever break ground.
Exactly, yeah.
Right. Things will change in five years.
Yeah.
You've had some great comments. We do appreciate it. Okay, so we are striking that one as well.
Okay. Yeah. You keeping track of that?
So according to my notes, we are not changing anything on the first one. I think we've.
The only one we're changing is.
We're talking a little bit about.
County Commissioners. Twelve-oh-five U-S.
Yes.
Limiting the restrictions on the commissioners.
Yeah, the four features.
Okay, and, and, and for that wording, you just want me to use that, uh, the, how did you want me to word that, or?
We just strike that last sentence?
Strike the last sentence, okay.
Strike the last sentence.
That's the only. Uh, twelve-point-oh-five, or twelve-seventeen-oh-five-S.
S.
Yes, it's actually, it's, it's on.
Doesn't limit the county commissioners. Yeah.
Well, it's on the last page at the, at the top. It's a U.
Well, the modification to just four items, we're not agreeing to that.
Yeah, so we just take the items that are.
We're not going to limit the items to just four items.
Yeah, items that are available is going to be struck.
Limiting guys are available for modification to the list of the four at the bottom. No, we're just striking that. We're not allowing that.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, we're striking it in the document, not here. This last sentence.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're in our document. So with that, the discussion that she had brought forward, is there any more discussion? She had brought up about the one-mile separation, alarm system, distance from homes. Is there any other discussion we want to bring up?
I do want to point out that although we do use national setbacks, we have written in this document that we can establish greater setbacks.
Yes.
In the CUPs. That is in this document.
We can never make it simpler. We can only make it different.
Right.
So we don't need to make any modifications because we already have the ability to.
To do that when the CUP.
To do that.
To make a one-mile separation, okay? We have that ability already. And she had mentioned alarm system and distance from homes. We already have that ability. So I think we've covered the alarm system well enough. We don't make any changes in this.
Yeah, we, we referenced the, I think that one, uh, the, the NEC or whatever it is that talks about the alarm systems. I think we referenced that anyway.
Yes.
I think it's time for the public to read this and to come back to us.
I agree. Instead of us voting on this, I think we're going to put it out to the public. See you next month and we will. She's dying to talk one more time. We appreciate your comments. Don't get me wrong. Please come to the podium. We appreciate public comment. This is extremely difficult, people. But that's why you come back. It's Thanksgiving next time. So you can come on back next week.
Yeah. So, so I, you mentioned that we covered, and I don't think it covers in here, that, that you could have two different best facilities and, and the distance between them.
We did not.
That, that is not in here. You, you had, you just mentioned that.
He was referencing with CUP.
It's not.
We could, we could.
The CUP setback.
The CUP.
Okay, you'll cover.
Yeah.
So, so if, if this Jupiter and Plus Power both want to do it within half a mile, you guys will control.
We would have a say.
CUP.
Yeah, we would have a say about it.
You have the CUP authority.
Okay, just want to be.
This is from house, this is from schools.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, with that, people, here's what we're going to do. We're going to have staff put this on the public review. The next meeting, we will bring it for vote.
And ask for specific comments on the specific.
Specific topics in there.
Yeah. So write your notes.
And I think we need a motion for that, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, you need a motion.
And the motion will be.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we publish.
Tabling it?
Double or tabling it.
Are we going to table it?
Yeah.
We need to table it.
But. And publish current form with the modifications made tonight of TXT twenty-four-zero-one for public review and comment the next meeting to review specific items in the resolution.
Make sure we didn't miss anything.
I second.
That isn't, that is a perfect motion. That is perfect. And promptly moved and seconded that we table this item. It will be placed on our website for public review. We will bring it back to the next meeting for any further public comment on specific items, and we will proceed forward with a vote at that time. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. With that.
Motion that we adjourn.
Too late, we're adjourned.
Didn't have to wait for that.
Too late, we're adjourned. We.